We're going to call the meeting to order at 6:05. And the first order on the agenda is the approval of minutes from September 21st, 2020. My assumption is that most of you did not get that until just now. So we're going to let everybody pause for a second so the board members can review the minutes and check in in three minutes.
I'm going to try to put them up on the screen.
Oh, perfect.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Nikki, people are handing in their recommendations for membership on the anti-racism task force.
Is that a question or a statement?
That was a question. I just saw it in the minutes.
I'm going to touch base about that.
Okay. Who took those minutes?
Beth did. She did an awesome job.
Yeah, they're good. That's what I like. Again, short and sweet.
Good and concise. Okay, so Scott's back. I think I see, we're still missing Colleen, but I see everybody else. Does anybody know anything about Colleen? Should I text her?
I don't. Probably worth, probably worth a.
I talked to her this afternoon at pickup and she was good to go. She talked about coming to the meeting, said she'd seen it. So she should be on her way, I would assume.
I'll just say checking.
Just checking in.
Okay. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, that was Scott moved. Is there a second? Sorry, I did that by voice. That was you, right, Sarah?
Colleen just emailed. She can't get into the meeting.
I'll send her the link.
Yeah, that'd be great, David.
I'll do that.
Awesome.
I think she's had this trouble.
Thank you for seeing me. Okay, is there any discussion on the minutes?
Looked good.
Yeah, Beth, those were awesome minutes. They were like so concise and captured everything. Yeah.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome. Okay. So before the discussion, all those in favor of approving the September 21st, 2020, please say aye. Aye. Hand raised for Beth. Okay, all those opposed? Extensions? No. Okay, so approved. I wanted to revisit because the minutes are good at reminding us of things that were still on the table. One of the things that I do not have a further update on is the Thetford Academy tuition. Ed has done a whole bunch of emailing and has also not heard anything. And so Ed and I are both under the impression of no news is good news. Nobody has come back and said that it's not appropriate. So we, I guess, still wait, but I'm hearing nothing further in the discussion. I think that's, it's probably fine. So we'll, we'll keep waiting. And if I hear anything, I'll let you guys know.
What's the question we're waiting for?
So the state auditor flagged, so at the state level, not the DOE level, flagged the Thetford tuition as an issue, paying the full tuition, saying that they were not a public school and that we were not supposed to be paying the full tuition to them. But then DOE, Ed went to DOE and said, we've always been paying the full tuition, figured this out. So DOE went back and forth with Ed, from my understanding, and they went back to the state and we haven't heard anything further. So my hope is that it's resolved. Katie?
I know, I talked to them the other day because we still haven't received their contracts either for, and they told us they were still waiting to hear whatever they were waiting to hear about, that they weren't sending out any contracts yet.
So Thetford.
That was Thetford. Yeah. So, and I don't, they didn't elaborate on it, but we still haven't seen anything from them either from our end in special ed.
Well, that's insightful because I thought it was just us that got flagged for paying full tuition to them. It sounds like maybe they got flagged by the state entirely.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, it sounds like we're in the dark.
Yeah, so, but we've been crickets since because we were waiting for that too. That's an outlier for us.
Yeah. Okay, lots of crickets. Okay, thank you, Katie. That was really helpful. There's something else I saw in the notes that I wanted to discuss that I can't remember.
Anti-racism task force I mentioned?
Yeah, I think, well, that's not on our agenda.
Okay.
Something else that I saw, there were two things, and I can't find it now. Oh, I just wanted to say, that's what it was. I went to, Alyssa joined us at our last meeting to talk about what her virtual classroom looked like and to get approval for a Black Lives Matter and LGBTQ flag. And my daughter went to her classroom today and it is beautifully done. And I was just so impressed and my daughter was so excited because it was so beautifully done. She was excited to be in it and she was excited to show it to me. So I just thought that any board members who hadn't had a chance to see that should know that it was incredibly well done and it is a very welcoming classroom and it was kind of exciting to see. So I was glad that she came to us and I was also glad to see the results.
Both, both my kids were doing their after-school work, listening to meditation music and watching Bob Ross videos from there.
I, I had to cut off the Bob Ross video so that we could focus on some other things. But there's also a, oh, I forget what it's called. It's a, there's a coloring, there are coloring books, digital coloring books that you can do. And I had to also say, okay, we're moving on from here too. There's lots of meditation-oriented activities, which is fantastic. Okay, so we have public participation. Is there anybody that wants to speak up at this point about any issue? I know that we've got Kara on the line and some of her issues are going to come up during the COVID, COVID update. Is there any other public? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. Okay, and then as far as the agenda goes, we have the principals' report, superintendent's report, COVID update, a budget update from Ed, Portrait of a Graduate, and Anti-Racism Task Force. I think we should move, should we move superintendent and principals or should we keep those up top?
We can move, we can move those down, I think, and Ed asked to go a little bit more toward the top of the agenda, but you know, we can, we might want to, because Kara's on the line too. I don't know how long she's got, but if you want to do the COVID.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If we could move COVID one and budget two.
Yeah.
And then reassess.
What did I miss?
You missed us approving the minutes.
Okay.
You're awesome about you.
Well, yeah, that's good. You don't want me there for that, so.
You missed the conversation of, should I text Colleen? We're good.
Couldn't get in. Something, my computer just, I don't know, balked.
They're not happy. I, by the way, I don't know if you guys can tell on the screen, I got a new computer and I no longer have buzzing coming out of the speakers.
Oh, awesome.
And it's a beautiful big screen, so it's kind of fun. Bigger screen, I should say. Okay, so let's move on to the COVID update. David, you want to take it away?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start, but then I'll let, I'll let Christine talk a little bit more locally and Angie can also add anything that I, that I leave out. I just want to remind everybody that essentially we, we're keeping, you know, three, three environments going or three schools going that are all very different. You know, one is the K8 school, which is basically, three of our, four of our buildings actually all are involved in that. And that's the, that's the hybrid model where we're, we're, we're in person in the morning and then in the afternoon, the students leave. And it did take us several weeks to certainly to figure out the afternoons. I'm still not so sure. We've got it completely figured out because there were a bunch of moving pieces to all of that, including and mostly around how to group kids, how to provide support services, how to do interventions. That, that was always a, you know, and I know Katie Ahern, who's on the line too, she could certainly add to this at some point, but that's been, there's a lot of moving pieces in that too, in terms of how special educators are, are, are reaching out to kids, how support staff and paraprofessionals are, are reaching out to kids. But I think the way that the morning is organized, and I know there is some question, I think that's part of what Kara is going to talk about tonight, about, you know, whether or not the day can be extended. And we can talk about that, you know, in a little while. But I think the way we did reopen, as I walk around the buildings and go in and out of the classrooms, I think that the K8 model definitely, the morning part of the K8 model is still working well. Teachers have been incredibly cooperative, parents have been incredibly cooperative, the health checks are going incredibly well, the pods, the pod structure, getting kids organized around a little bit more of an integrated curriculum, getting kids outside. And I think probably just in general, the, the peace and order of the environment because the kids are in pods and there's a lot less transitioning. I mean, I think I heard Brittany say the other day that behavior reports and discipline referrals are down anywhere from 70 to 80%. So it's just.
71 to be exact.
71% to be.
Wow.
It's just a, it's a, it's an incredibly, and I've seen it, it's an incredibly peaceful environment. So that's one school we've got going, the K8. Then the other piece is the high school. You don't get too involved in that at Artland. But I will tell you that that's, that's going pretty well. The kids come in and get three classes in the morning, including an integrated unit. They all start together in the morning and, and they are clustered in pods, they work together, and then they go to two other classes, but those classes are within those pods. So those kids are not moving around the building either. And I know that the, you know, the two new administrators, Colleen and Katie, have been working very hard to make that work well. And I know Angie's been a great resource for them as well, so. And that too, not just the K8 piece that, but also the high school piece that wins are very, you know, very peaceful, very orderly. Kids have been outside a lot, involved in the integrated work. And also they go, they leave around, they leave at 11:00. Some kids go to the tech center, most of the kids go home and then they engage in three additional blocks of instruction. And then Angie has been coordinating the third school, basically, and that's the totally 100% remote school. And that's got several of our SU teachers engaged with kids from across the SU. And Angie, I don't know whether you want to speak to how that's going directly or not, but I get the sense that there were glitches in the beginning, but most of those have gotten worked out. I've sat in on a few of those classes because I don't want to lose touch with those remote kids. And I think amazing work is being done by the staff that Angie's supervising. Would you want to talk about that at all, Angie?
Yeah, I will. Excuse me. So it is, it was not without a very steep learning curve, continues to be a steep learning curve for some of our families. We're just getting down to data regarding student progress and working on that in our staff meeting tomorrow so that I can have some solid numbers. As expected, the families that had some tech savvy are able to make it work and those that have struggled with that, struggled with their, with their internet connection has, and some of the students have really struggled. So it is, it's like a little tiny version of the school, though there is, you know, a fair number that are being very successful and then a number that I'm concerned about and how we support those families is really on my mind right now, how we support them and offer them the same kinds of supports that we offer our in-person students. And part of that is access is just not the same. So we're working on that. That's the biggest challenge, I'd say, with it.
Yeah. I, I just, closing out, I do want to give a shout out again to our school nurses. I think they've done a phenomenal job trying to stay on top of this. They are the ones that have to make decisions about who quarantines, who doesn't quarantine, when they can come back, who has to test, who doesn't have to test. They've got the algorithm from the VDH, they've been using it, I think, quite efficiently and effectively. You know, we've had a couple of situations where, you know, the parents didn't feel like the kids needed to stay home because it was just a runny nose or a, or a temporary fever, but we're standing behind the fact that those nurses are the COVID coordinators in our building and we're supporting them. If they say they have to stay home, they have to stay home. If they say they have to get a COVID test to return, then they have to get a COVID test to return. I'm just not going to take that liability and responsibility for the healthcare, for the healthcare, you know, industry. So again, a shout out to them and a shout out to the administrators who are trying to make this work. I will say that we, and this may be pertinent to, and I don't know exactly the questions that Kara have, I've certainly, I've read her, her written questions, but I know that there are questions about, you know, whether this model, you know, is, is going to change or how long is it going to be in effect. I will tell you that the administrative team is talking about that right now. We're waiting for some further guidance from the Agency of Education. We are, we have been promised this week, if not by the end of this week, certainly early next week, that we're going to get that guidance. I think there is some concern at the, at the level of the Agency of Education and quite frankly, the Vermont Department of Health about whether or not we have to make adjustments based on holiday travel and that period of time between Thanksgiving and, and, and the Christmas season or the holiday season. And they, they have promised us guidance around that. I, I think that, that whether or not it's, it's, whether or not there'll be any extended remote time, we, we've decided certainly as an administrative team, and we would have involved the board if we thought differently, that we're not going to recommend any additional remote time unless the state recommends additional remote time. We would have had to go to the SU board with that anyway. So that's, that's just the way, you know, it's, it's going to unfold here. We published our calendar, we're going to stay with our, with our calendar, but there are rumors circulating at the AOE level that the governor's office and the AOE may be making some announcements about, I don't know whether they're going to mandate additional time or whether they're going to encourage it, or whether they're going to just ignore it like, like, like we have as well. In terms of extending the day, we're going to, we're going to get the, we had a reopening task force that worked diligently to come up with schedules and timeframes. There were certainly members of the union on that task force because, you know, many of these alternative schedules require compliance with our master agreement and with our contract because, you know, both support staff and teachers are, are tied to certain, you know, parts of that contract that require, you know, duty-free lunches, for example, certain dismissal times, planning periods. So we're going to reconvene that reopening task force, depending on the information we get from the state. And we're going to look at what we could do about extending the day any further. I mean, the general consensus is that the high school seems to be working because there are three, there are three in-person classes and three remote classes, but the K8 hybrid model, it seems like we are struggling with getting access to certain kids who, as Angie said, struggle with the technology, struggle with the platform. So if there was a way to, and by the way, all of our kids don't go to good learning spaces when they leave our building. Some of them go to their childcare centers, some of them go to the rec centers, some of them go to relatives or grandparents' houses, some have good Wi-Fi access, some don't have good Wi-Fi access. So, so that's, that's a problem. So I think there is, there is the thought afoot that if the state, you know, doesn't come out, come out with some decree about needing to, to extend remote or, or be more remote, that I think there's a, there's a, there's a feeling among the administrative team that we'd like to maybe start to extend that day. But what we don't want to do is disrupt that pod structure and we don't want to disrupt, you know, the restrictions that we've got in place around masking and distancing and, and hand washing and all the things that seem to be working and creating a peaceful climate for our kids and for, and for our staff. So we just have to be careful if and when we decide to extend that day as to how we do that and, and consider all of those factors, you know, that, that branch out into support services, unified arts teachers, schedules, the master agreement. So it's, it's not just, it's not just like waving a wand and making it happen. It's, it's going to take some real planning and, and that planning is, is starting probably as early as this week. We, we've talked, we're getting together with the union on, on Friday. Some of this will be an initial discussion and then we'll see where we go from there. But it's a difficult environment, it's a hard environment, it's a scary environment for some. I think the thing we have to remember is that we do have adults in our community, staff members in our community that still have anxiety about all of this. They, they live with immune compromised relatives or parents, they have children that have compromised systems. And so it's always a delicate balance about how to move, move forward. So that's kind of where we are. And Christine, I don't know if you wanted from a Heartland perspective to talk about how it's going and then we can certainly open it to any questions.
Yeah, David, I think you covered a lot of it, but the first thing on my list was to really thank Annette, our school nurse. She's doing an amazing job. It's a hard job because people, you know, especially with the change in neighboring communities going to yellow, travel restrictions, it's very complicated for people. And so she's doing a really great job letting people know the expectations and the rules. And sometimes it's, it's, it's hard to hear that information. So she's doing a really great job. So kudos to her. I think our, you know, the system that we have in place is working really well. The health checks are, are going really well. You know, with the temperatures cooling off, the thermometers are still an issue at some point, sometimes. So we are now holding them under our armpits to keep them warm so that they are more accurately reflecting kids' temperatures. But I think we're still, the afternoon schedule is getting ironed out. I think it's, it's a, it's a work in progress. And Brittany and I have really been, that's one of the big items on our list, making sure the kids that need support in the afternoon and are available for that support are getting it. So working on that, Canvas seems to be coming along. Teachers are getting used to it and kids are, kids are getting used to it as well. I think I will say in terms of extending the day, I've mentioned it to a couple of teachers and they, they are in favor of it. So I think, you know, we should, we should definitely start talking about that. They are, there are some staff that are, you know, the weather's getting cold and they're still going outside, doors are still open, the heat's on. That's the best we can do. I mean, we need, we need fresh air to be in the classrooms. But I will say, and I'll share in my presentation later, the survey results, we surveyed the teachers, I think last week, last Friday or two Fridays ago. And I think their biggest concern is travel over the holidays and coming back to school. They are very concerned and recognize that people need to see their families. They haven't seen them and it's stressful not seeing family. So it's just a concern. So otherwise, I think we're, we're doing pretty well. There's great teaming going on, great collaboration. People are stepping up. When staff members are out, other members are filling in and the kids are doing a phenomenal job. I can't, I can't say that enough. They really are very impressed with, with how they're doing. So if you have specific questions, just let me know.
Awesome. So I, we do have a question. Oh, Beth, go ahead.
No, I mean, just what I've, what I've seen and I guess the one concerning thing I've heard and seen is the lack of, of intervention happening. You know, both my kids were receiving some sort of intervention and that hasn't happened yet this year. And so that's, that's where I, I'm a little concerned for my own kids, but then I know that, you know, I understand the teachers are supposed to be doing it after. And then, of course, my kids are going to the rec for most of the week. And so it's, it's really, the reality of that is really high for our family. And I know I've talked to other families that are really concerned around that as well. And yeah, I don't know if, you know, the Wi-Fi at the rec isn't great, you know, both my kids could potentially do it, you know? It's that whole thing of like, how can we accommodate it a little better? But it's, it's, yeah, and I know my, it's not just me. I know there's other folks that have talked to me about that, that situation as well.
Yeah. How is the rec trying to handle it? Are they?
The rec has been doing, I mean, they have, they have 20 kids, as far as I can know, and they're outside like 99 points at a time. And they, they've, they're running it basically like they ran their summer camps. So they do temperature checks when they get off the bus there and everything, and they're just out and doing it as much, you know, outside as possible. My hope is that they maybe can, I mean, I don't know if you've talked to the rec, Christine, but be able to move over to the, the gym for the winter, you know, like that would be so much more space than a tiny little rec basement.
I was just wondering how they were trying to handle the online school after school if they were making an effort to get kids signed on and doing stuff.
It's, it's, what I've witnessed is it's kid, it's more kid-directed. And so they've, you know, like, like Samar will do, will ask to do her work and she can go upstairs, there's that like workout room. And so she can go, they can go up there and do that or have a meeting there. They get some Wi-Fi outside, but it's mostly student-directed. It's not, I mean, I think they might ask, do you want to do your work? But they're not like sitting down and corralling kids or anything like that.
Yeah. They don't, they don't have someone doing that. Yeah, intervention, intervention is one of our concerns as well, which is why Brittany and I are looking carefully at, at schedules in the afternoon and seeing staff that are available. Kids just took, finished the T, well, they're not quite done with TNP testing, all of them, but that's useful data that we need for, to plan for intervention. But our interventionists, you know, they're classroom teachers this year, so we don't have an available, specific intervention teacher, so it's, it has to be the classroom teachers.
So I think that's what's been motivating the conversation at the administrative team level around extending the day by master agreement. You know, we, we need to provide teachers with a duty-free lunch and with a planning period, which, which results in about an hour and a half of time that, because we've got them in pods and we, and the teachers are not moving around and they're not getting a substantial break in the morning. But there is some talk about whether or not we would extend the day to, let's say, 1:15 or 1:30 and then, and then when we're done, we're done. And then they would get their duty-free lunch and they would get their planning period at the end of the day. But we would be able to do all of this instruction and all of this intervention and all of this resource work and, and the services for IEP students, we would be able to do all of that on site. And because it is hard when you've got kids going to the rec center or you've got kids going to. or you've got kids going to grandma's house or to this, to this childcare. So the idea is uh, if we can get the staff and the union, and I think, I don't, uh, like Christine said, I'm optimistic because I think they recognize the problem and I think they'd like an extended day. Uh, so I, 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 I think we're going to get there. It's just, it's logistically going to take us a little time to get there. And then, you know, we don't, we, you know, we want to make sure too that we don't get, you know, kind of antithetical information of the AOE saying, okay, let's bottle up tighter now, winter's coming. The flu season's here, you know, let's, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't think we'll get that because Vermont still appears pretty green on the map, but I, I'm looking around this country as a whole and seeing how many cases per day. And it's not very, heading into holiday season, it, it's not very optimistic, if you know what I mean. But, but I don't know, maybe we just ignore that and let the state worry about that and we just keep going with what, what, what we want to do. I think that's.
But I would, um, I, I agree with you, David, that the, the national picture doesn't look optimistic. And I think Windsor County right now is orange, um, which is also not good. Um, but uh, I do, I see value in trying to figure out how to extend the day even if it doesn't happen until March. Um, I think that that planning takes time and it takes work. And while I'd love to, one of my kids was crying, why can't we do it all in school um today? So while I think it would be awesome um, to be able to accomplish it all in school, I don't know if that's going to happen in the short term, but I think it's worthwhile to have that planning because I, I think that when it gets warm again and flu season is past, we're still going to be looking at this question. So um, I think that that would be good.
And I think Nikki, Nikki, to be honest, I think if, if everything goes well, I think we could do it well before March, but we'll keep everybody posted. I did want to make one other statement and, and, and then I, I saw Sarah, your hand went up. But um, we, you know, we have had this year two active cases of, of, of COVID, two, two folks who have tested positive. One in the very beginning who really had very little interaction. It was neither one of these are Heartland uh staff members. Uh, and a matter of fact, just tested again and tested positive again. This person has worked maybe one day or two days. It's a brand new support staff member and, and uh, and, and they, and there's really struggling. Uh, when, when, when you get hit hard with this COVID nineteen, it is not a pretty sight. I just want to remind everybody on, 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 on this call that COVID nineteen is a dangerous, it's a dangerous infection and it, it's, it hits people differently. And I think unfortunately, the message we're getting from, from the, you know, from, from the, from the top, you know, national scene is, is, is the, the messages are mixed, but the people that I've known that have contracted this disease uh jet, or this infection, it, it's, it's been brutal. But I will say that wh- what, what we've decided to do, and this came off of certainly Sarah, an email you sent to me. I think we've been, we've been, and when we have a positive COVID nineteen case, we've been announcing it to the district that's involved, but there was some thought that we should widen that. And that if we have a po- a positive COVID nineteen case, whether it be a staff member or a student, that we should probably announce it SU-wide, so everybody knows and can follow kind of the, not only the supervisor reunion, but we're contributing to some degree to, to, to that Windsor County that, that, you know, that's growing. I know of at least two other people, they don't work in our district, but who right now have tested positive for COVID nineteen. So it's in Windsor County. It's, it's, it's not, you know, I mean, it's all.
I'm glad you mentioned that, David, because it's, that was something that I wanted to ask about. I think it's really important for us to communicate out as much as we can. Any information anybody has helps other people.
Right, deal with it, right.
Yeah, act on, on what's happening. Um, and I, I think that the numbers are starting to go up and that we um, we can't anticipate what's going to happen next, but I'm hearing through grapevines in the medical field that we have more community spread than we did in the springtime, which is, you know, different from people coming in from out of town and the, you know, buckle that, buckle up.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Is all.
Okay, so I saw a lot of hands raised and I want to.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in.
No, that's okay. Brittany, you had something a while ago.
Oh, I was just going to say, I don't know how many kids we have at the Windsor camp because I know it's opened us some of our camp kids, but I know that they are providing um, a certain time block per group, it sounds like they're divided into groups, so each group gets a time block for academic time. So um, it's, it seemed promising. I don't know if we have kids there, but um, that's all.
Beth, I saw you and Sarah, I think. It was either Beth or Scott, you guys were in the same.
I think Beth went already. Yep, Sarah might have been next.
There. Um, so I was going to ask a question, but just before I say that, David, because you brought up the, the notification policy. Um, I think, I think that's great and I, I, I just really think it's important that we have a, you know, sort of a routine when we get a positive case, that there's a press release that goes out. There's a notification that goes out to every S U family. Um, this is what every other school district in the area is doing. Um, and then we just, you know, it's like a, like clearly I've been getting the, the handover ones and, you know, even as a high school parent, I get them when there's an elementary case, I get them when there's a middle school case. And it's really just a, it's almost like a form letter that says, you know, we have been notified of a case. It doesn't reveal any information about whether it's a student or a staff member. Um, we are following, you know, just lists, everything that's being done to contact trace and telling people what to expect. And I just think it has to be that kind of a, an automatic um, release when we have a positive case within our S U so that people trust that they're hearing about it. You know, I think, I, I just think that's really important. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that. And I think, I mean, we, I don't know if we need to talk about an official policy or um, you know. Um, and then my other question that I wanted to ask about the half days was, I know part of the rationale for, for doing the afternoons of distance learning was to sort of give everyone a chance to practice so that we'll be ready in case we have to go a hundred percent remote. And so I just wanted to ask how, sort of how that part of it is going. Um, you know, I have a, I, I have a little bit of a sense from my own house that it, you know, there, there was definitely kind of a learning curve, but it does feel like the kids have kind of settled into, okay, we get home, we sit down, this is what we do, this is where I go. From your perspective, um, how, how is that working? Do you feel like it's preparing us for that eventuality?
Do you want me to go, David?
Yeah, Christine, I think it'd be good for you.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think it is, um, I think the staff and the students are figuring it out. Um, it's different by pod. I will say we were meeting with K one today, um, Brittany and I to kind of flush out afternoon uh schedules and what that looks like and the supports that are there and which kids need that. And, you know, they're, they're getting there. It's not, you know, they're waiting for parent teacher conferences to, to really connect with parents, to share um, wh- what the needs are and the availability of kids and parents. Because at that level, you really need a parent with you um, to do, to do the work. So um, I, you know, two, three, four is more settled. Actually, fourth grade started early and, and piloted some stuff and I think they, they've, they're in, in sync and, and doing pretty well. Um, five, six, I mean, fifth seems to be on track, sixth grade is um, it's, it's when canvas comes into play and the curriculum is, is it's pretty, uh, what's the, what's the word I want to say? It's a lot of reading text and responding. It's not that exciting. It's um, I don't think it's all that we hoped it would be, so we're trying to figure that out. Um, uh, Angie can concur or, or not. I think she'd concur. And then seven, eight, they really set up a nice system of um, kids. They're, they're really using it as win time, what I need time. Um, it, it was fit time last year. Um, focused instruction time. And they're allowing the kids to sign up on Monday for what they think they need help in for that week. And then they're going to the um, the meetings that they need to go to and the teachers are, are doing more double dosing of instruction or helping kids individually. So it's a work in progress. I think, will it mirror what, what it looks like when we go remote completely? I mean, I believe that's on our admin agenda for Wednesday. Making sure we have all our ducks in a row, um, and that staff knows the expectations and families know the expectations and what's, what that's going to look like. But um, I don't, uh, David, Angie, that.
That's hel- yeah, that's helpful. That was helpful. Okay. It sounds like Ki- Kara might want to ask um, an additional question that it's, that she felt like, it sounds like that we, that we haven't uh responded to yet. Did you, Kara, did you want to unmute?
Yeah, Kara, why don't you go ahead and ask your question?
I think I've asked a lot of questions that I haven't heard answers to.
Um, yeah, so um, some of the que- questions are appropriate for public meeting and other questions are less appropriate for public meeting. Um, and so I was going to ask uh the questions out of your email um, to the group. Um, so uh, one of the, one of Kara's questions was um, transparency as far as um, the supervisor reunion teacher expectations, um, what, what school employees are supposed to be doing um, during those uh in-person hours, so between the twelve-thirty dismissal and three o'clock. I don't know if Christine or David wants that.
Make sure, yeah, so we're talking about the in-person block or the?
No, the, the, when the kids are remote, what are the um,
Okay, yeah.
Staff supposed to be doing?
Yeah, so, so that's uh, that's exactly what I said. They are entitled to a, a half an hour duty free lunch and a, and a forty-five minute planning period. So for an hour and a half, they had to do nothing, basically, except plan.
Sorry, Dr. Baker, could you just, could you explain what time um, the teacher contract starts in the morning? Because I know now that kids are not um, starting school until eight-thirty. I know that teachers are no longer showing up as early as they used to. So that kind of affects the, the work day schedule. And additionally, is there anything in the contract about um, being allowed to provide childcare to their own children during the paid workday? Um.
I, I, I can answer the contract time. The contract hours are seven forty-five, start at seven forty-five. Staff are expected to be at work at seven forty-five. Uh, health checks start at eight, so kids are going into the classrooms at eight o'clock in the morning and supervised by teachers during the eight to eight-twenty time. Um, kids are able to eat breakfast, teachers are checking in with them. Um, then they typically start around um, eight-thirty is the official time. Once everybody's in and settled, they have morning meeting time, but they are onsite at seven forty-five and, and kids are arriving at eight.
Yeah, and that's always, that's always been the case. That's been the arrival time at, at Heartland, seven forty-five. So nothing's changed there. I'll answer the second part. There is nothing in the contract that allows for, 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 for us to uh, to, to enable them to do childcare uh from a management perspective. We've just decided in the afternoon that if they can uh work remotely from home and they do have childcare issues, then we've allowed them to do that. I mean, that's just, it's just consistent with kind of our philosophy to support families where we can support families. So that's, that's, it's, that's not obligated in the contract. It's just the way we've been treating our staff.
And I, I totally respect that. Um, my only question is, is that like publicly, you know, there are a lot, a lot of working parents in the school district. And I know the board is made up of a lot of people who have some flexibility in their working hours and they have the ability to support their kids and provide the direct instruction. And I just, I, I just wonder if um, if these decisions, uh, you know, i- is the board, are the people on this team really in touch with the reality of, of working parents who don't enjoy such flexibility in their lives and don't enjoy that socioeconomic um, status? And I, I get it. I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's great that teachers in your district are supported that way. But it really worries me that decisions are being made and the tone of decisions being made seem to really disregard the reality that um, the rest of us are experiencing.
You know, I, I appreciate that, Kara. It's one of the reasons that we're considering extending the day, right? There was always a time when students had to leave. Usually it was around two-thirty. A lot of people worked till five, five-thirty. So there always had to be some plans made in the afternoon. It's just how long can we keep the kids? You know, and that was, that was our original concern was just how long can kids stay masked and stay distanced and stay in pods? And so that's why we started off the way we started off. But I think just because of what, just what you said is why we're considering extent. Well, that's not the only reason, but that's one of the reasons we're thinking about extending the day because we know the pressure that it puts on, 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 on working parents. But you know, it's, 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 it's a difficulty without a doubt. I mean, schools have provided historically a childcare function.
Right, and, and in addition to that, when, when you are providing your staff with the opportunity to not have to spend money on childcare and you're telling the community that they are responsible for supporting the education of their child and paying for childcare while your employees are encho- enjoying the opportunity to uh, suffer neither of those consequences. I, it really makes me wonder as a taxpayer, you know, i- it makes me feel like, geez, I, I feel like next time is time to vote for a school uh budget um, in this town. I would really like to see a cut in the school budget and an increase in a program like the rec department that can actually support the needs of kids in this community. Um, and perhaps support financially all the families who are paying out a great deal of money in childcare right now that your teachers do not, and your staff do not have to experience. I, like the optics of that, like that, that makes me a little queasy in the stomach thinking about that. And, and what are other school districts doing? I can tell you that they're not doing that. So what, what entitles one school district to experience those luxuries and, and employees in another district not to?
Yeah, well, I know Kara, your district is not, is not supporting that. I will tell you, there are other districts that are supporting families and, and childcare. And I can't explain why yours doesn't do that. I mean, I get it. I mean, that, that's a decision.
I'm, I'm not, I'm talking as a taxpayer in this district.
Right.
I, I, I don't want to talk about anything about anything personal that doesn't have to do with me being a resident of this town.
No, what I'm saying is.
And I would love to hear from you, Dr. Baker, some specific examples because all the surrounding communities are not doing this. And, and the surrounding communities are making choices that are best for children and they're learning and, and trying to get kids in school as much as possible. And it feels like some of these decisions are about what's best for.
Yeah, that, that's incorrect, Kara. That's just incorrect, but that's okay.
Yeah, I would, I would also agree in that I think that what we are doing is better than all the surrounding schools and that we have our kids in school five days a week and the surrounding schools are going two days a week. And that makes it more challenging for teachers and that teachers are out of their houses for more of the time. But our kids are in the building five days a week and that's three less days a week that people have to find care. And I, I feel like as a taxpayer and as a board member, I am fully in support of that decision and think that we're, in talking to other parents who are also working parents all around, they are jealous of what we have in our S U. And so that's where I stand on that. Sarah?
Lebanon's going back to five days a week.
Okay, Kara, we have to let the board members talk.
Um, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that, you know, as far, I haven't heard any um, any issues with staff members ha- you know, having kids while they're uh, in, in the afternoon. If there is an issue like that, I think that, you know, there are appropriate places to address that. Um, but I haven't, I haven't seen any negative effects from this. And I, you know, I, I, I would also just support the idea that, um, you know, I think there are employers all over the Upper Valley right now who are trying to make things a little easier on working families during this time. And I'm, I'm proud to work for, or to represent a district that um, is trying to make things a little bit easier. But certainly if there's a specific instance where a teacher is distracted or isn't, you know, then that, that can be addressed through our, through the policies that we have in place. And I would absolutely support doing that. Um.
I also think that.
I'm sorry.
Not all teachers are taking advantage of being allowed to have their kids. There are a lot of teachers whose kids are. There are a lot of teachers whose kids are at home alone, just like a lot of other parents because those families have decided that the adult could focus better at work.
So, so maybe I'm totally off base, maybe I shouldn't have brought it up. You know, I, I love teachers, I, I want, I'm just, my only point is like the optics of it, when, when we're getting emails from Dr. Baker talking about all the expectations for parents and you're gonna, you know, crack down this year about expectations and, and hearing those things and then seeing that the folks working in the district aren't feeling those same things, that, you know, I, like, I, I feel like this is going the wrong way. COVID is serious, COVID is a big deal. Like I, like this isn't a, a political thing. This is just like, this, this feels yucky, being told over and over about our accountability of, as parents when the folks who are telling us that aren't feeling the same effects. And, and that's, that's my only point. And, and I don't mean to, that's, that's my only point. So I, I guess I'm done with that and, and that's it. I, I think I'm the only member of the public who showed up tonight. I'm probably the only member of the public who wrote a letter to you. Um, I, I'm sure it will be quick and easy to dismiss my concerns, but, but my guess is I'm probably not the only one. I'm just the only one stupid enough to bring it up publicly.
Cara, you're not the only one that, uh, wrote us a letter, although most of the letters, um, or phone calls had more to do with trying to extend the day and trying to understand why the day was structured the way it was. Um, we, this is the only concern that we've had as far as teachers. Um, Sarah, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say that I, 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 I'm glad Cara brought it to our attention and I think it's a really good conversation to have. And, um, it sounds like the administrative team is, is going in the direction that, um, that I think Cara, you, you would like to see us going. And I think a lot of, a lot of parents would as well. And there's, there's some trickiness here and it may take more time to get it right and to figure out how to do it, especially if, as seems to be the case, cases arising over the next couple of weeks. Um, but I, you're, you're, I don't think you're alone at all. And I think everyone is, and I'll just say from the board's perspective, you know, some of us may absolutely enjoy some privileges, um, around timing and flexibility. Some of us, I know, don't. Um, I, I'm one of the ones who has a fairly flexible schedule, but I know many of the other people up here do not have flexible schedules. And I would just say that every single conversation we've had has been around thinking about how tough this is for working families and we have agonized over it. We really have, everybody has. And, you know, when we were presented with the schedule, we said, how are people going to do this? And we, we, many times during this discussion, we just keep coming up to this is the worst possible solution to this problem, except for every other solution. And we really are just all kind of trying to do the best we can here. But we, believe me, we know how hard this is for, for all families, for working families. And, um, you know, we're, we're doing what we can, I guess, is what, is what I would say.
And I, I totally appreciate, oh, sorry.
There are a lot of the concerns that you raise are national concerns. I mean, these are the same things that we're facing as a nation in that our, the way our country is structured is that school is where we send our kids um, when parents go off to work. And the, i- it's a national problem. This isn't something that, this board has spent a lot of time talking about it and a lot of time trying to figure it out. And it's gonna take a much broader solution than what we can come up with in Heartland. And we've tried and we just can't do it alone.
I, I totally appreciate that. I guess one thing I, I wrote, um, in, in my comments here is that rather than receiving emails saying how parents are going to be held accountable um, for achieving learning standards, I'd really like this board to support, uh, providing parents with a list of learning standards that need to be met during the year. And that when we receive, uh, assignments that are of low quality that we don't feel are worthwhile to invest our very valuable time at home, that we have the freedom to choose, uh, to meet those learn, learning standards in a different way on our own, um, and not feel like, you know, that that's gonna be a problem. I, 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 it, you know, when, when these expectations are suddenly thrust on us at home and what we receive is not of high quality, I, I, as a human being with a brain in my head, am going to choose to opt out and, and choose to educate my children, um, as I see fit. And, and I would like to know that this school district and this school board is gonna support me in that and, and not attempt to hold me accountable for checking boxes for them.
I can just share my, my, Cara, this is Beth. Um, I can just share my own experience regarding that last, last spring. Um, you know, I had a similar experience where I wasn't thrilled always with what was coming through the door. Um, I, and I had a conversation with the teacher of, you know, these are the other things I'd like to do. Is that, is that appropriate? And the answer was yes. You know, like there, there was, it was just good conversations with the teachers that I was able to feel like I got what I needed to move forward and, and feel like I was able to get, you know, the, the, the quality that I was looking for, um, with, with, you know, some good conversations with the, with the teachers to move things ahead. And I, and I, I hear I'm, I'm, we are a working family and we do not have a lot of extra time nor cash to be throwing at childcare. Um, and this, I, I look at all our options and what we're doing and it is all horrible. And there's nothing here that's on my side and I don't, you know, that's, and that's kind of how it's felt since this whole, whole time. So I, I very much hear what you're saying and, um, it's, 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 it's difficult. But I do have to say, I don't think my family could handle, um, like doing AB scheduling or anything like that. Um, the consistency of the five days, even if it's shorter. Um, at least I can figure out childcare because that's, you know, it's been, I can't, I can't fathom trying to do on and off days and actually keep a job. Um, so I'm, I'm grateful for that.
I, I don't know if David or Christine, if you guys have a response. Um, like Beth, though, I've also found that I have tweaked assignments plenty, both in the spring and this fall. I just had a email with the teacher of what I was proposing and, um, in most cases had very positive response. So I don't know if Christine or David want to follow me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about what you said, Cara, and the, the piece about parents being held accountable and, um, I'm not exactly, um, sure what that, what that means. I mean, in my mind, parents are our partners right now and we're, we're working with them hand in hand. Um, i- in the afternoons especially and appreciate all that they're doing. So I, I hope that you don't think it's in, in a punitive way. That, that's, that's kind of what I'm taking away from what, what you're saying because we're certainly willing to work with parents and tweak assignments. And, you know, if it's not working for your child, that's what we're here for. So I, I don't know if that helps or, or doesn't help, but, um, that's just what I was thinking about. I don't know if David has anything to add about. I mean, we're, we're struggling with accountability and, and it's not that the we're hoping that parents can work with us, but we recognize that parents are working and we're doing the best that we can and, and parents are doing the best that we can. And sometimes it's case by case and this parent can't do it and that's okay. So, um, we're happy to work with any family a- around this issue.
Yeah, no, and I see Brittany's got her hand up too.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I also think that, um, because each family is kind of getting used to this new normal at a different rate. Um, school certainly started off differently. So during, during the school day, it was a lot of relationship building and getting kids back into school after being off for six months. And, you know, same thing kind of goes for the afternoon. Let's figure out what each family needs, what, what, what can we provide that's reasonable? Let's get some assessment data, let's figure out where kids are at. So that when we do kind of really do a remote push in the afternoon, we're doing it well. And I think that's kind of this little bubble that we've been in this last month of trying to kind of get the hang of all that and get schedules set, um, which, which may feel not fantastic because obviously it's not a full day of school like, like everybody's typically used to. But, you know, we certainly want to be sure we get it right when we, when we, you know, put it all out there for everybody, so.
Um, so I'm, I'm just going through, uh, more questions. So the, um, second question was, uh, what's considered a remote learning day? And I think that the state, the state, the state had standards for what was considered a remote learning day. We've had one practice remote day. Um, and I guess I'm just looking for what they will look like in the future because we've got a lot more coming up.
Well, yeah.
Good.
Well, I, I think our, our thinking was that our in-person days would mirror our remote days. And so, um, you know, that is, that is still the hope that we're going to be able to translate what we're doing in school to doing at home as best that we can and balance, um, parents' requests for not as much screen time. And so we're, we're trying to figure out how to do that best. Um, but David, feel free to share your thinking on that.
No, that was it. I mean, the state, the state has published guidelines and, and they are by, by, you know, grade level, the expectations K four, uh, five nine, and then high school, a five eight, and then high school. And they run basically in the average of three, four or five hours, essentially looking at those three grade spans. Um, but they also talk a lot about both that, that, that whole notion of synchronous and asynchronous work, right? So they're not saying, for example, a middle school student has to be glued to, to, to the screen on a remote day for four to five hours. So it's, it's really just setting those expectations and we, you know, we're, we're, you know, we, we are going to be get, because we have these remote days coming up, we're going to be getting a little clearer and probably it will be important to get that word out to parents too about what the expectation should be around screen time. You know, and, and non-screen time, because that's, that, that's part of the problem. We've really, we always wrestle with how much, how much screen time is good for, for a student on any particular day. So we, you know, but, but there are some guidelines, but they're vague in the sense that they don't tell you how much should be synchronous and how much should be asynchronous. But we're looking at that three to five hour. And as Christine said, we're looking to have it mirror the, the, the actual school day that we have right now.
I think, um, I think that question, Cara asked that question. Um, and I think, um, some other parents also asked it. And I think it may be because, um, the first remote day was also a teacher in-service day, which I think made it a little bit more challenging. So it, um, it ended up looking, I, it, for us, I think it was mostly a fix and finish day with very little actual work. Um, and I guess maybe some reassurance that, um, not all remote days are going to look like that. Um, maybe also part of what we need.
That, that's accurate, Nikki. The staff had two collaborative problem solving sessions to finish up and they were in professional development and that is partly why. Um, and our plan is not to have that happen for, for remote days.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. I just, um, I wanted to make sure that that was clear. Um, so, uh, and then Cara's last question was related to, um, potentially our guidelines being more strict than state guidelines. But I think David cleared that up in a series of additional emails. Um, does anybody have any further thoughts on that? I feel like this is particularly challenging with, um, Windsor County having a higher caseload than Grafton County, but Grafton County being considered orange. So that makes it a little odd. Um, okay, um, so, let's see, I just want to make sure, uh, does anything, is there anything else that?
Somebody asked, that, that's Ed on the phone, just see Ed Connaughton, he, you know, in terms of the financial report, that, that's who's on the phone. I think maybe the only public.
I just, just checking in, um, just for the agenda's sake, where are we?
We are, we are on COVID, which was our first thing, and we haven't gotten any farther.
Okay.
So, um,
I'm good.
So, and I, uh, for clarity, I did, um, have a couple of conversations with people and I think some other board members did as well. Um, and a, a lot of the conversations were about, um, how can we extend this day? It's very challenging, um, for working parents. Um, and doing the after-school part is very challenging for working parents. And I think that, um, I think our administration knows that as well. Um, and I think it was a good way to start and now we're seeing some growing pains. Um, and I think that that was kind of the gist of the conversation that I had with most of the public. Okay, so if we've got our COVID update, um, let's move on to Ed. Ed, you waited patiently. How's it going?
Uh, good, good. Um, I sent out a, I sent out a financial report earlier, uh, this weekend. And with it, I sent out some questions that I had been asked by Sean Whalen in Weathersfield. And I, uh, sent them out to give us a basis to have a discussion tonight about the budget as it stands in FY21 and what FY22 looks like. And I hope, did everyone get a chance to look at that? So as you can see from the, the financial report itself, I'm projecting at this point a $253,000 surplus. And it is pretty far out. We're doing a better job of, uh, projecting because we're doing a purchase order system, which is still a work in progress. But we're, we're getting better at it. Um, so right now we're looking at about a, a little less than a 3% uh, surplus for the year. Still early, there's still a lot going on, but, um, one of the things that's become more obvious to me, and I had this discussion with, uh, Christine as well, is that yes, we do have increases in the, uh, costs due to the pandemic, but we also realize some savings because things aren't, um, things that we normally would spend money on, we're not spending money on. So I, I did have a conversation with, uh, Christine on, on, um, Friday and we talked about things like, uh, extracurricular transportation, uh, some of the contracted services. What were the other ones, Christine? Like, I don't really remember.
Travel.
Yeah.
Because people aren't going to workshops, they're taking virtual workshops. We, we saw some savings, um, in, um, supplies because I really told the staff, this is not the year to buy anything extra, just the necessities. So we saved a decent amount of money there. Um, you know, transportation, basically for, we're not transporting, um, the kids to Windsor for algebra, we're not transporting kids to field trips. So there, there is cost savings there as well. And then, um, the other ones, Ed?
I think you've covered them pretty much. I mean, just, I do think that there's an inordinate amount of conversation around the, uh, additional expenditures due to the pandemic. And what, what's really happened is you've reassigned a lot of people. You've had people that you, you have teachers and, and support staff that you've been able to move around from what I can see. We haven't incurred a lot of costs along those lines. We've just reallocated people's time and, and the resources that you had budgeted for in a different way. So, uh, there are, is, are there, is there federal money to cover the anticipated expenses? Yeah, there is. It's, it's a muddle though. I mean, there's not a lot of, uh, uh, we've been going back and forth. And I think I told you the last time we talked, it's, there's a lot of, um, I don't know how to put this, but there's just a lot of, of, uh, back and forth on how these monies are going to get distributed and what's eligible and what's not eligible and what's the best way to get the money? Do we want to put it into a surplus for FY22? Do we want to cover the expenses? Some of the school districts have, between the, the, uh, repurposed money and the, and the actual cost of things, they've, they've claimed as much as $8 million, you know, so. So there's a lot of controversy around that. But as you can see, from what I've talked to you, I went in and I used actuals in my mind. And I, and I came up with about $116,000 worth of refundable expenditures. And one of them, one of them is the principals and the executive staff and Heartland's time for the summer and things like that. And so we, we put together, I put together the grant, and then I, so that, and they're telling us, they being the AOE, are telling us to be, kind of in a backhanded, handed way, you know, be liberal. You know, don't, don't be afraid to repurpose things. Because the more we spend, because they're afraid they're not going to be able to spend all the money by the end of the, by the end of December. And they have to spend it in this year. So then we get an email from the, the, the part of the AOE that does the oversight, and they give us this 32-page document of what we're going to have to, required to have to support the expenditures. So on the one hand, they're saying, yeah, that could be repurposed, and that could be repurposed. And on the other hand, we're getting this guidance from their, their monitoring group that says, yeah, but you can't do that, and yes, you can do this. So I, I'm being pretty conservative. And as, as I said before, I, some of what I've claimed, I'm not sure. I, I mean, some of the executive time, meaning the superintendent's time, one of the things that I've run into is, excuse me, not the superintendent, but the principal, is when I said that our principals spent the whole summer, and the assistant principal spent the whole summer doing planning for the pandemic. I mean, I think that's accurate. I think it's really accurate. But
I can confirm.
Their question to me was, well, what did they normally do? So what weren't they doing when they were doing the COVID planning?
We didn't take any vacation time at all. So there you go.
Right, so that's, that's one of the questions that I have to, that, that they're going to be asking me. And that's one of the ones I stumbled on. Because I, I don't know what a full-time principal does during the summer at the schools. So that's one of the ones I've been going back and forth with David on and, and trying to get some, some. So that's where we are on the federal money. There's money that we're calling CRS, that's what I just got through talking to. There's another group of money called ESER. It's ESER money they told us to try to spend in the spring rather than during the school year, because they want to maximize the amount of expenditures they can put into the CRF grant. So I, I think that, safe to say, you're going to get some of the money back. None of what I've sent in has been approved. There's been a lot of questions, but nobody said, yes, you're going to get the money yet. So the fourth question he asked is, looking ahead to the budget process for FY22, what conditions can be predicted that might affect Heartland's budget and the local tax rate? Well, I sent along another sheet that had, that outlined what makes up the Ed fund. What are the, what are the sources of the Ed fund? And as you can see, a large portion of that, of the Ed fund is, are property taxes. And then the, the other revenue sources that they talk about are rooms and meals tax. And, and these are all taxes that are, have been projected to have increasingly large shortfalls. So the short answer to that question is, well, if those other revenue sources are short, then they're going to have to make that up some way. Now, part of that way is to set aside some of the CRF money. And the other way would be to potentially go back and raise property taxes. So there is that potential, but I can't give you a definitive answer on how that's going to look. I mean, I don't think there's anybody in the state that knows that quite yet. But I think common sense would dictate that this would be the year to be very, very conservative in your budgeting. And I've had that conversation with Christine as well. You know, we, we, you know, one of the things that I've run into this, as I go through the budget process, is the way that we're structured, they want, some of the principals want to know, how do we budget? Do we budget for a normal school year, or do we budget for a COVID year? And I don't know how to, how to answer that question. So what we're trying to budget for now is September of 2021. I would, I would say that you would budget, I'm going to be optimistic here. I, I would say you budget as if it were a normal school year with the same staff that you would need to teach your kids as normal, all being there all day, every day. There are people, there are some principals that are saying that you could potentially realize some savings if you didn't budget that way. But I don't know if that's a safe thing to do at this point. And finally, I think, I, I think that's the only other question we had in there. Yeah, so having said all that, is, are there any questions?
Ed, do you remember, maybe somebody on this call remembers, where Heartland ended up last year for FY20?
Yeah, I think it was about, I, I'll double check here, but I think it was $150,000 in the red.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, and I know that that was due to, well, partly due to unbudgeted tuition expenses, right? We had like eight or nine kids
Yep.
that we hadn't anticipated, yeah.
And that was one of my questions, is looking at tuition. It looks like we budgeted correctly for tuition this year?
No, actually, I haven't gotten all the bills in yet. So what I did was I, I, I encumbered to budget. What we have to do, what we normally do is we wait for that first semester bill, and then we use that to create a purchase order for the whole year.
And we don't have, so who are we?
We don't have all of them in yet.
They usually come in in October. So maybe by next month.
We, we definitely added some high school students that we did not anticipate this year. We also lost a few, so it may
Wash?
It, probably not wash, but it might help, so.
So we, to answer your question, the deficit from the, the one you're bringing forward into the FY22 budget year is $151,601 negative.
Okay, well, I think that was better than the deficit we brought into this year. We must not have a deficit if we could figure out how many kids we have. Okay. Any other board members have questions?
Hey, Ed, could you add anything to the Thetford tuition question?
I just, I think it's a, it's a miscommunication at the state level. I think there is one arm in the state that's saying, you know, their blood, they're, they're doing an audit on the tuition, because somebody up there said that we pay too much tuition. And then there's, they're saying that Thetfords was never accepted as one of those tuitions that was grandfathered in. And we've been always led to believe by the AOE that Thetford, St. John's Barry, those schools, all of them, we paid, we pay the full amount of their tuition because they were grandfathered in. So schools like Waldorf and Sharon Academy get the state average. And therein lies the dispute. And what I did was I connected the, the auditing agency with the AOE, and they've been going back and forth ever since. I mean, I don't know where that stands. But in my experience, I don't ask them that question until they ask me a question. Because I, I don't think we've done anything wrong. I mean, we've been doing this since I started and before I started.
I, I, I was doing it almost 25, 30 years ago. So that's, that's been the case for a long, long time. But it's good to let the state auditors, you know, have it out with the AOE because then they don't bother us. We'll let them figure it out.
I don't think there's really anything to figure out.
No, I think it, well, they've got to find the document that says, I think that's what they're trying to do. Like, where did that happen? You know, but I don't know, we'll see.
Well, and I think that, I think Nicole pointed it out, the language is really ambiguous.
Yeah.
What they were looking for was a motion from the school board.
No, that's not, that's not going to happen.
Well, no, but I mean, it's not something that the school board was ever, ever had to make a motion for. It was known through statute that we were supposed to pay. And they're going back to the statute, and the AOE is kind of caught in the middle of this, saying, wait a minute. Our advice has always been to pay the tuition. So I, I think this thing will take care of itself.
I hope so.
I, I don't know what the resolution would be.
Well, the good news is Thetford would, would owe us a boatload of money.
Yeah, and they'd go out of business.
Okay, so I think going forward with budgeting, I, I kind of, and I, I would like some board input on this, is that I kind of concur with Ed in that for next September, we should pretend that maybe this is behind us and we can have a normal school year. But I do, I do wonder with the pod structure that we have, if, if we can learn some lessons from how this is impacting us behaviorally and maybe not have as many people. If we could do this, yeah, Brittany, go ahead. So I want input.
Yeah, no, I, I recently, and I, I haven't compiled all of the information, but I'm happy to share it with the board when I do. But I sent out a survey last week to teachers just saying what, you know, what things are going really well in your classroom behaviorally that's resulting in this 71% decrease. And I'm still collecting more and more information every day. But, but there was a lot of really good feedback that we're going to kind of compile and say, okay, let's look at this and see what we can keep in place if we, if we had a typical school year. So hopefully that will be really helpful moving forward.
When you say less people, Nikki, what do you mean by that? Because I think part of what's working is we're, we're using all our people, just in a different way.
And so, yeah, and I, I recognize that. And I guess I just, I wonder, I mean, by less people, I don't mean a lot less people. But, you know, we've got, we've got one-on-ones, and we've got BIs, and we've got, you know, extra paras. And I just wonder if some of those kids are doing a lot better because of the way that we've restructured school, that maybe some kids, and I know we don't have a lot of one-on-ones, I think we had two, if I'm remembering right, or do we have more than that? So I don't know, like, I guess I'm just throwing it out there. I, and, and part of this, I was going to send you guys an email. Part of this is coming from our family's experience in that fewer transitions is
It's wonderful.
Yeah, and that's really cut down on behaviors. But the other thing that has, and I, I don't know, I mean, maybe this is only my child, but they've developed trust because they're seeing a teacher. So like, there have been teachers in the school that have been there for two years that my child has never trusted, because they see them once a week for a half hour or 40 minutes. And that's not enough to establish trust. And after one week of having them in the classroom, all of a sudden, everything's changed and
Yeah, the, having the related arts teachers, and it's not perfect yet, but, but doing some co-teaching, being in the classroom with the teacher, leading some of the learning, you know, with the teacher as the support, you know, the classroom teacher as the support, is really a model I'd love to replicate going forward. I mean, I think it's working. Not every kid gets every special every week, but that, that's okay. I mean, what they're gaining, you know, offsets that, I, I believe. I think not eating in the cafeteria. I mean, many of our behavior issues were during the lunchtime. I don't know if teachers love having kids eating in the classroom, but it sure is. It's almost like a family dinner, right? You're, you're eating with your, with your pod or your, your classroom. So there's, there's lots I'd like to carry forward with what we're doing. You know, some of it, you know, raises the issue. Well, if teachers are with the kids all day, what time does school end? Or how do we use our staff in a different way to, you know, make the day longer, but still keep this structure in place? So yeah, lots to think about. And I think, you know, in terms of budgeting for next year, I, I mean, I think the safe thing is to budget like school is going to be back to normal. But I, I feel like this is the new normal, kind of. I'd like to keep it this way. But the, the questions for me are, you know, we, we're, we've got an additional LNA. Do I carry that forward? Will we need that next year? I don't know. Will COVID be gone? You know, we've hired up, today, we hired a permanent sub. Well, we need that next year. Because that's a, you know, that's a person that is guaranteed to work every day. It's kind of funny, because I don't think we ever had a day where we didn't need subs last year, the year before. But, you know, there might be some days where you don't. So it's, it's just trying to make the best decisions with what we know. But basically, it's, I've already sent out a memo to the staff in terms of supplies. It's still not the time to buy extra. We're going to just keep it bare, bare minimum for next year. Not that that's a bit, not, not that's big-ticket items, because it's really not in a, in a big budget. But it's one thing we have control over, and then staffing. So that's where we're at. And Ed's been, Ed's been wonderful. He's been really a good teacher in this new e-finance system. He hasn't given me all the keys yet, I believe, but some of them. He's giving me more access as I request it, so.
Hey, Christine, is, is the, is a permanent sub licensed?
They do not have to be licensed, no.
But if they're, if they're a permanent sub, are they, are they credentialed in some way?
No, they're doing, by permanent, it means they work only for Heartland. But they're doing day, they're doing, they might do a day here, two days there, two days in this classroom. So they're not, they're not like a long-term sub, which is what I think you're referring to, Scott.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's really to keep just one person, one additional person in our building. We don't want to bring in any, the fewer people in the building, the better. So this is one consistent person that can sub anywhere in the building, if that makes sense.
And we're lucky with, with the one that we're hiring now. He was licensed in 2017, I think he let his license lapse for elementary ed, but he was licensed.
Yeah.
Which is great, so he, he does have quite a bit of experience.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Sounds exciting. Brittany, do you, do you have something else?
I think I was just going to talk about one other thing that, you know, of course, is coming back from the survey, is just the smaller class sizes and the impact of that. But to get smaller class sizes, there are other costs. Like, you know, you get smaller class sizes because you're using all of the staff you possibly have, which doesn't leave intervention. But at the same time, if you have smaller class sizes, you might not need as much intervention because you have more staff in a smaller class size. So it's, it's like this, you know, kind of balancing act that we're, we're trying to work through. So, but there would be a lot more data as the year goes on about all of that information. So the information that I gathered is really just very preliminary, like, hey, what are we seeing right now? And then we'll, we'll do follow-up throughout the year as well.
Sarah, did you have something? You're on mute.
Sorry, I was just thinking about, as we sort of rejiggered everybody this year, how, are there any holes that we then are going to have to fill? Like, I was thinking the, the library position, right? That one that, that's going to be a totally new hire, the library STEM, right? Because we've used our librarian STEM teacher as a classroom teacher, or?
Yes, but she'll go back to, she'll, Tina will go back to being the library STEM teacher. And the way we did that, we had some combined grade levels.
Right, okay. So we won't have to make that up.
Well, if we want to keep small classes and, then, then we, then we will somehow.
Okay, so that's maybe one, so that's one sort of new hire to, to kind of fill in. I'm just thinking about how we sort of hole in different places, and where do we have to fill in?
Yeah, they also have two interventionists that are classroom teachers right now.
Right.
So if we want interventionist back, you pull them out of the mix, and you combine some classes, which makes larger groups.
And we didn't, and we did not ever replace our part-time interventionist, Teresa. So that's part of the cost savings, I'm sure that Ed is, is showing.
Yeah.
And we also have 50 more kids, in theory, in September.
Right, back in school. Right, back in school.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah, there are some.
A lot to think about.
Yeah.
You know, one thing I do have to say that I think is, is going pretty well is, um, you know, using our lodge staff in the, in the classroom as like hands-on, firsthand intervention before things kind of go south versus being more reactionary, which is what they've been in the past. And I, I do think that that, that seems to be going really well. And we are moving them around, um, minimally, but a little bit based on the data that we're seeing, uh, the behavior data that we're seeing coming in. So, um, we'll keep collecting that on that too and see how we can best utilize them.
If we're, um, throwing out ideas about, you know, how to go forward as we begin budgeting, I guess I would share that I'm not comfortable acting as if the next school year will be a quote, "normal" school year. I, I, I feel like more of the same is more likely. At least to start with, um, I don't know that. I don't have a crystal ball, but I just, I think it would be easier to let down our guard if we, if we were really able to, rather than trying to, uh, start up again. You know, I mean, it would be, be easier to keep this, this boat sailing. Um, I think one thing that comes to my mind, folks, is that, that I, when Ed was speaking about the, um, CARES funds, I think that's what it was. I don't know. Is Ed still on the phone? Yeah. And that, I understand there's a time limit, I think we of, of the end of the year. That is, that is really a juxtaposition of, as a, as a community representative. So I, I guess it's really a whole other animal, but I just wanted to say out loud, like, nothing makes like the blood come to my face than being like the spring of the school year and overhearing at a school board meeting that there's a basket full of money that was in the budget and we need to spend that. Because as a community member, I don't, I don't want to hear that. I want to hear like correct spending and spending that needs to be done and not, not spending the budget anytime just because it was put in the budget nine months ago. So I just think that's, that's worth like saying out loud. Um, like I said, it's a whole other basket of money. But it's still the same people that are in charge of that financial management.
I don't, Scott, I, I, that's not what I hear, heard, hear Ed say at all, you know, and what I heard is that he's being really careful and really, you know, and, and not feeling like he's charging CARES Act stuff. That doesn't, that's why the whole idea of like, what are, how can we charge the principals time in the summer? You know, because that was a significant change from past years. And what does that look like? So that's not what I heard Ed saying was that we were going beyond the budget or changing that. It's more, it's what I heard is that Ed was really looking at it really, really closely to make sure we could be reimbursed to the fullest. But not over the line in any way. I mean, that's, I didn't hear that.
I agree, I agree with you, Beth. I, it's, I was more or less just, um, bringing up like historically. That's.
Yeah, and I don't think.
Community should have the, um, should trust that, uh, that we're, because the budget is always an estimate. I, I, I'm totally on the side of that the budget is an estimate. And, and it really, when you think about the timing associated with the school district operations, you really can't have any other outlook. I don't believe that the budget is an estimate. And so we all understand that life goes on and that we, come springtime, that there just may not be a need for what we budgeted for.
Yeah, I, I, I think to Scott's, to Scott's point, I, I don't think he was necessarily talking about the CARES money. But I know, for example, we do have a district that will remain unnamed. Uh, Ed certainly can attest to this though, but sometimes in the spring, they find out that they've got a fairly substantial surplus. Right now, that's just an estimate. But let's say you get your second quarter report or you get your third quarter report. And, and, and I've seen this board, not the Heartland Board, say, well, we've got this money, let's, let's buy this or let's buy that. You know, I, I think it's okay to land at the end of the year with a surplus if you have to land with a surplus. And I think this board has always pretty much understood that. And I think that's the way we'll operate. You know, and you can't, you can't predict. I mean, I, I, I think the, I had a superintendent one time tell me that, you know, if you can land within one to three percent on either side of your budget, surplus or deficit, you're probably doing pretty well. Because it's also, especially in this time in, you know, day and age, it's, it's all an estimate, as, as Scott said. So I think we'll see what happens. My guess is that that, that's, that number's gonna change as we go on. Uh, but I think we have saved some money in some areas and that's a good thing.
Hey, well, one more thing, I'm sorry, um, when I, I heard loud and clear that it was getting cold and the doors were still open, Christine.
Yeah.
Is there any, um, that's really like a?
I know, it feels wrong, but.
You're breaking Scott's household rules.
No, no, that's just like, that's interest, it's very interesting. And I understand that we're, we're trying to meet. There are a lot of goals to meet here, basically. That's what, and so I wonder if they must be helping, um, district leaders like understand like the size of the room or something and how often the door would need to be opened or, or if it should ever be shut or.
They're, they're, the guidance is that the door should be open and, and windows. So, uh, you know, I've told staff, you don't have to have them a hundred percent like wide open. You can, you know, maybe put something in the door to let fresh air in. But, um, to be honest, Scott, some staff need the door open to feel safe.
Yeah.
They just do. And, um,
and.
Um, it does, I mean, the heat, uh, before the heat was on and the doors were open, I was freezing, literally. And I, I'm typically cold, but it was cold. Um, now that the heat's on, it feels reasonable. Um, but it is, it feels like you're, you're just wasting energy, right? Because the door's open. So, um, I, I don't know the answer to that. Except we're supposed to keep them open.
Following the guidance is the way to go. I see. I'm with you.
Yeah.
Do you, is, do you foresee it changing for winter? I mean, it's cold possibly now. Like, what's it gonna be like if it's ten degrees outside?
Yeah, I, I don't know, Colleen. Um, but it is all about, uh, you know, it's, it's, they call it, what do they call it? The Swiss cheese approach. It's like the masking, the distance, the ventilator, airflow, all of those.
Just wondering if it's gonna be doable. If there's snow coming in, the door, that might not be right.
No, I think as it gets colder, I'm, I'm guessing they're gonna start to just be cracked open instead of wide open. But, um, you know, staff are still playing. They'll, they'll continue to go outside. And when they're outside, the doors are closed, obviously. But, um, it is great to see them outside, I have to tell you. It's pretty, it's pretty awesome.
Do, are the eighth graders going outside as much? I hear a little bit of whining in my house.
They, they're, they're not as much. Um, no, I mean, it's more, it, it starts, uh, the most, I would say, the younger kids go out the most. As you get older, it's harder to, what they're teaching is harder to teach outside. Um, because they rely on their Promethean boards and other things that they don't have outside. So it does get more challenging. But we'll, we'll remind, you know, it is good to be outside when you can be.
It also took quite a long time to get some of the, um, middle school supplies in because, I mean, we were just short supplied and the orders, everybody was ordering everything all at the same time. So it took a long time to get those in. And the more they got in, they got out a little bit more, but that did take quite a while. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
How, how's the gear situation? Like, uh, do we still need gear for kids? Like, as we move forward? Because, I mean, eighth graders, you know, love to wear their shorts all some, all winter.
They'll stop if they get cold. Maybe.
Well, I think we're good.
Kind of mind will.
Christine.
Pretty good. Yes, yes, Ed.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, for some reason, I couldn't get myself unmuted. But two things. One is that, um, you're going to have to, as a board, and the schools, all of them are gonna have to anticipate increase in energy. It's only because as, as you've outlined, the, the way they dictated, you, you've got to exchange the air in the, in your rooms every twenty minutes. And to that end, that means you're bringing in cold air to, to, and blowing out warm air. So you're gonna have to, it's gonna be chilly. There's no way around that. Um, the second part is, is there's different CR, CRF monies that are available. And one of them was from, uh, Efficiency Vermont. And Heartland got a significant amount of money from Efficiency Vermont in the, in the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar range. And it still hasn't been finalized, like all the CRF money. But that money was put towards, um, getting your air handlers and your air circulation and HVAC system up to, up to par. Now, there's money, I, I put in another thirty-three thousand into the CRF grant. That is the one I had talked about earlier. And it's not clear to me whether they're gonna allow that expense. But if they don't allow that expense, then I'm asking the board tonight if, if they would be okay with taking that money out of your capital reserve fund. Because if we, we have to, we being, Heartland has to be willing to complete the project. And if you're gonna get a hundred and twenty-five thousand in money from Efficiency Vermont and the CRF, then I, I think that it's a good idea to commit thirty-three thousand out of your capital reserve.
In order to commit from our capital reserve, that requires a vote at town meeting, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So you're, you're giving us that long of a timeframe to think this through. Okay. Yeah, and, and the, um, improvement to the air handling system is something that will improve the air handling system beyond this year and maybe next, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it will make it so that the system can be, uh, it can be handled from a remote basis.
Automated.
You could, you could do it from your phone. And I think Jim showed you, didn't he, Christine, what the system's capable of? Yeah, and, and the system in Heartland is, unfortunately, unfortunately, this, the, the pandemic has, has, um, brought to light a lot of shortcomings and a lot of other opportunities. And this is an opportunity to get that system up and operational.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're still working on it. Um, the guy's there, uh, from Control Technologies, I believe. And he works af- after the kids leave every day. So in process.
And the other thing I was gonna say is, I think that the conversation that you had earlier that was triggered by, um, uh, Nikki's ask about what were the lessons and Brittany's response about what were the lessons? I think that's an invaluable conversation and I commend you for having it because it's gonna make, it's gonna be difficult. There are, I've already said to Christine that if it comes down to it, and as you all well know, is any time you're gonna make any significant changes in your budget. And, I mean, supplies will get you a couple of thousand here and there, but you really have to look at staffing. And that's a conversation that needs to emanate from the at-board. And you really, to have it in an open forum like this, is it, that's a good start.
Thanks for your vote of confidence. I don't know that we got anywhere on that conversation, but, um, and I'm certainly not.
Hear it a lot. I don't hear that kind of conversation a lot. And it's, you're talking about uh, education and things like that and not talking about money, which is important. I think those are the things, like, every crisis has opportunity. And Brittany just outlined one. And Christine talking about people not, whether or not they go to the cafeteria, I never would have known that. I used to love the cafeteria.
Oh, yeah, kids love it. It's, it's a nightmare.
Right now, Christine and I get to deliver lunches, which we love.
And I, I will say, since it is a public forum, um, when I brought that up, I wasn't intending to cut any staff. I was specifically looking at not hiring.
New.
People that, yeah, not hiring.
But I do wanna collate all that information for you guys. Once I get more of it, we, we just started that collection. And so I'm, I actually have, you can come in and see it all up on my wall. It's all taped to the wall right now that I'm trying to compare what's working and, and maybe what we can improve on. So, um, I do think that will be very informative moving forward.
Yeah, that's just a preliminary thought. It just seems like, you know, out of crisis comes opportunity and see if we can capitalize.
And I think the fact that Christine has looked at that pod structure and, I mean, we, we just see so many advantages to that. And if one of them is to look at staffing patterns, then we can do that. But I, I think, yeah, that, that, that's a good idea. We need to do that as a whole.
We do, we do.
Thanks, Ed.
Yeah, thank you, Ed. Does anybody have any other questions for Ed? Or are we led, good to let Ed continue on with his evening? Okay.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you for hanging out with us for an hour and fifty minutes. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, um, so I'm gonna go back up to the top of the, uh, agenda with the principal's report. Sent out earlier. Do you wanna share your screen or do we all have a second?
I'll share.
She's gonna share.
It's, it's, it's not a long report. It's short. I assumed we'd be talking about other things, so I didn't include them. But, um, let me present here. Okay. All right, so, um, we are in the middle, I think I mentioned this earlier, in the middle of TMP testing. Actually, we're at the end. We're just doing makeups this week for kids that, that weren't able to, um, complete, complete, um, TMP testing. And, um, as, as Dr. Baker predicted, we, we didn't, um, we're doing okay on our TMP scores. Uh, the MTSS academic, uh, leadership team meets tomorrow. We're gonna, we're gonna dive in and look more specifically. But in general, we want to be in the blue or the green. And these are, um, class averages, scaled scores. So, um, each grade level and remote students are also participating in TMP. So in math, you know, as, as grade level cohorts, everybody's in the blue and green. There are definitely kids, when I dive down into the grade levels, where there are kids in the yellow and red that need additional support. So that's really important information for us. So that's math and that is.
Which is better, blue or green?
Green is better.
Okay. So we're doing okay.
The blue is, yeah, blue is in the, um, range of proficient.
Awesome. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, overall, um, you know, we were, we were concerned. We didn't know where kids would be. And, uh, you know, this is one measure. Teachers are doing other measures right now, um, F and P tests, um, uh, running records and, and things like that. But this is good initial data, um, that's coming in. Again, it's not quite, we're not quite done yet, but we will be this week. Um, we are continuing our work, although we're not gonna be, um, contracting with Leader and Me this year. Uh, some of our cost savings came from that money that we put aside. But we are trying to continue, um, using the traits, um, you know, the seven habits of healthy kids. Brittany's, um, working hard at making sure that the teachers have resources to teach the, the habits. And, um, going in and reading books, recording videos and doing what we can to keep it moving forward. Uh, having nominations are in process right now for student of the month, which the first habit was, um, being proactive. So those, those kids will be honored, um, at the beginning, beginning of November.
Um, one comment on that that just popped into my head, um, since, since your parents are your, um, assistants this year, it might be nice to send them a note. And maybe you did and some of us don't read our notes. But, um,
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, this is our habit and this is how it's expressed in a kid. I, I, I don't know, like just a short, two or three bullets on the habit and why it's good or how you do it.
Be valuable for me because there are a lot of parent resources online, um, for teaching these. In fact, a lot of, the book that, that's on the slide actually is designed for parents and it has activities in the back or whatever. Would it be, I don't want to overwhelm parents is, is kind of what I was thinking. So I didn't know. So I didn't know if it would be valuable to, in the Monday memo, to put a, here's the activity of the week or of the month for this character trait.
We could also work on, I mean, the teachers are teaching the traits in school, but maybe a focus in the afternoon, Brittany, some teachers, giving parents access to that, access to them that way as well. But yeah, we can work on that. Let's think about it.
Yeah, and honestly, like, so, like many other parents, I'm completely overwhelmed all the time. If you just gave me three or four bullets, like, if I knew that, like, I can think of things, knowing now that the character trait of the month was be proactive, there are just ways that I would have put that in, even with my child's behavior today. And so just to be able to carry that through, even if it's during dinnertime and other times of the day, just to say, oh, you're being proactive. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Is the Monday memo a good way to get that out to people?
Well, that's for the staff. You mean the Wildcat Weekly?
I'm sorry, the Wildcat.
Yeah, Wildcat Weekly. Yeah, I think that would be great, just like, three or four bullets in the Wildcat Weekly. And more information is great, but just to, somewhere really short-
Yeah.
For those of us that don't always follow through, as well as we'd like.
There's a lot of resources that are just, that are very short, like, here are three things that you could do this week to promote, be proactive. So, yeah, we can definitely do that. That's a great idea.
Yeah. Awesome. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I think it would be great, I don't know for, as, like, people that are watching over children and their afternoon work, if there's other ways for them to, like, give caught you cards or things like that. Just if they're seeing, you know, because I'm just saying, that's really proactive, if kids are actually doing their work on their own. So I'm sharing that and stuff like that.
Yeah, last year, we tried a Google form that parents could fill out and submit. And then we would represent that. We didn't get too much turnout for that. I think it might have been, the design wasn't maybe fantastic for parents to be able to easily access it. So, but we can certainly think about how to do that. I think other schools have done it before, so I'll do some research on that.
I would even say, just maybe telling parents they can email their teacher if their kid does something great at home.
Yeah.
Finding a form for me would be the thing that stopped me.
Would it be, now that the kids are back and forth, Nikki, if we sent home just blank wildcards for parents to fill out, to send back in, would that be an easy way or not?
I think, I'm speaking for my family, I think my kids would find it really cheesy to get one from me. I think it would lose its, it would lose its value coming from me. But if I were, like, so this is information, if I were to email the teacher and be like, hey, I was really proud because so and so did this, and then the teacher said, hey, your mom said she was really proud, then the kid would feel-
Got it.
I don't know. That's the psychology of our house.
No, that makes sense. Totally. Okay, we'll work on that. I wrote it on my list. I don't, I know I put this on my presentation last month, but I don't think I got to this last slide. We are using Heartland Connects. I don't know if any of you have seen it. Tina Skihin was the kind of lead on this. She put it together. And we really wanted parents to have one place to go for all of the remote things that need to happen. And staff are using it. They're putting their newsletters. They've got schedules, links to where the kids need to go. So it's working pretty well. I love feedback from parents. If any of you have used it or not, and find it useful, that would be good information. At some point, maybe we'll, have you, it sounds like, Nikki, you want to say something? I can't see you.
I'll say that it's really helpful to be able to go to one place that's not, that's not controlled by my kids. So I don't have to open up one Chromebook and try and figure out what's going on over here, and then go to the other Chromebook and figure out what's going on. Just to be able, because what I'm doing is, on Mondays, before I pick the kids up from school, I'm going to Heartland Next and trying to figure out what their week looks like so that I can-
You can plan it. Okay.
Yeah. I am finding it very helpful. And I'm also going to say, Scott, you can connect too. There's no parent login. You can just Google Heartland Connects and check it out if you want to.
I was just trying to find it right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the dashboard, Scott. If you go to, well, you can go, access it through the dashboard, or you can access it through our homepage. I think it's under parent, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
So you can go to parent, and then it says Heartland Connects on there. So you can check it out either way.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really great, too, because teachers get to see what other teachers are doing. Our, like I shared earlier, our fourth grade teachers piloted remote afternoons first and created some great links and plans on Heartland Connects and shared it out with the rest of the staff. So it's a good tool for helping each other as well. So we'll keep that-
I'm finding it great, just especially with the younger kids, because then I'm not relying on a second grader to have their appropriate bookmarks marked, which doesn't always happen. So, yeah, that's hugely helpful.
Well, that's good to hear. That was a hope, so.
Yeah. Well, no, and it seems so much more transparent, because I always felt like I was logging into, like, their seesaw. What are your assignments? What is this? I mean, I still have to do a little bit of that, but it's more like I can get a cursory overview of what the expectations are for the afternoon pretty easily.
That's great. I will share that information with the staff. They'll appreciate it. Quick update on acceptance and understanding. They continue to provide professional development at staff meetings. So we are at, we are at finalizing definitions of some key words, which was interesting. The other night, Nikki and I were at the Anti-Racism Task Force Preliminary Committee. I'm not sure what we're called, Nikki, but talking about what is the definition of discrimination and racism? And so our staff is wrestling with that as well. So it'll be nice to have some common definitions of what those words mean. So that's what we worked on last month, getting feedback to some preliminary ideas. And they're going to revisit that at the next staff meeting. But moving forward with that work. And then the other thing that we're spending time learning about at staff meetings is trauma and how to become a trauma-informed school. And this is a big initiative in our whole SU. And we have a very active champions group within our building. And they, they're doing some educating at staff meetings as well. I think I met with them last week. And I think we're going to take a pause and just do a check-in at the next staff meeting. It feels like staff need to do that, and that's really important. The man that is our lead in trauma work is Dave Malnick. And he is a firm believer in just stopping and doing some reflective practice as a staff to build trust and cohesion. And he does it with the administrative team regularly. We usually all end up in tears. So I'm hoping, which is good for us sometimes. So that group is leading that work. And then we put out a survey. I would say Angie did most of the work. Week five was a similar survey to week one. It was a staff survey, and it had some of the same questions. In hindsight, I probably should have done a comparison of week one and week five. But overall, people, you know, more than 50% of the people feel very safe. Some are still not sure. Very few feel, you know, unsafe, which is, which is good. Transitions, how are transitions in and out of the building going? Pretty well. I will say, in Heartland, we do have one-way hallways right now. And I think as the weather starts to get really cold, we may consider just dividing the hallway into a two-lane hallway.
And to be clear, that basically, they're not really transitioning. It's just for bathroom usage and things like that, not classes or-
Right. And then I think this is about building cleanliness. And I think we've really flushed out and worked out the disinfecting schedule. And everybody feels like, you know, the maintenance staff has been working incredibly hard for the past, I don't know, eight months, however long we've been at this. But they, I think the staff is feeling that the building is being taken care of. And this is SU, SU-wide results, not just Heartland. And that is the end of my report. So let me stop sharing and take any questions or-
Thank you, Christine. That was really awesome.
Yeah, I'm trying not to make it too, too long, because I know we talk about other things throughout the meeting. But just to give you a sense of where we're at and what we're doing. And, did I stop presenting?
Yeah.
Sorry.
We're all back. You're good. Okay, any other questions for Christine? No. So David, your superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I really, you know, again, it's always good to follow Christine, because she covers a lot of the things that we're working on. And the only two things I would add is, just in light of Ed's report, you know, we do have to keep our mindset now geared toward budgeting. I think we're going to, our goal is to have a draft SU budget ready for the next SU meeting. So, because that always drives the assessment piece for all of the individual districts. And it gives us a baseline to start putting the rest of the budget together. So again, there's not going to be, much like most of the local districts, we're not going to have any huge initiatives, anything added. You know, we, we'll look at some of the, you know, Katie, to her credit, she's on with us tonight, but she got the special ed service plan, which is probably 80% of the SU budget is special education. But she got that done early this year. So Ed's had those numbers to play with. And to Katie's credit, she's kept it in the, I think, I don't know, the increase was what, Katie? 2%, 3%? I don't even know what the-
There wasn't an increase. We kept it.
All right, good. It was level.
I think, I think it's $20 over, if it is anything, but it, which, in an $8 million budget, I think that's-
Yeah, 20 bucks.
But I don't think there was an increase. I will triple check. I've been doing it piecemeal the past couple of days, so to fill it in. So sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's right. I knew it was not.
While we're on that-
I didn't know it was that long. Go ahead, Nikki.
Yeah, just while we were on that, Katie, I just want to give you a huge shout out, shout out, that that is just awesome. Because in previous years, we've waited forever for that information and weren't sure where it was coming from. And it was always an enormous increase. And I just like, thank you. I know it's hard to pull together, and I'm just really happy to hear that update at this point in the year.
I just want to add, part of the reason that things are working as well as they have been is the connection between regular ed and special ed staff. I mean, they're working together. We're not, there's not a line drawn in the sand. We're all on the same team, and we're working together, and that feels really good. And I think kids feel that as well, so.
And that's across the-
That's good news.
So, very good news, yeah. Very good news. And then the only other thing, other than the stuff we've already reported out, and I know Nikki will talk a little bit about the Anti-Racism Task Force, so I'm not going to go there. But it's negotiations, and we can talk more specifically. I think we do need a very brief executive session tonight. We can talk, but I can say publicly that we did hit, you know, impasse. We, you know, we both can't, you know, any further alone. So that's going to mean, you start usually with mediation. We'll bring in a mutually agreed-to mediator. We'll put our proposals that are still left on the table on the table, and they'll put theirs. And the mediator will run back and forth between the two rooms. It'll be virtual, so the mediator's not going to cost as much as it has in the past, because usually you have to pay travel and lodging and a full day's worth of mediation time. So, and we split that cost with the association. So it's too bad. I don't think we're that far apart. But we can give you a little more detail in executive session. But that's, and we have a couple of other things to share in executive session, too, that are personnel-related. But we'll wait until we go there. That's it for me.
Thank you, David. Okay, so moving right along, that brings us to the Portrait of a Graduate update, which I think is Angie, or is that me?
No, Angie can give that, because she's been working hard with Mike Pickelson on that piece.
I can give that. And what it is, is the strategic plan is going to the board chairs on Wednesday evening. And Mike is joining us, and he's going to walk us through the process that the strategic plan was created through, and then answer any questions, anticipate any questions that may come out when we share it with the whole board. Next week? Is it next week? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, looking forward to that. And that's really where we're at, where we are at.
Yeah. But Angie's done a nice job really working with Mike. And I think when you see the strategic plan, when it comes to the whole, and I'll send it to all board members, if you haven't already, I don't think we've sent it out, no, because we're waiting for this vetting process with the board chairs. But that writing team really worked hard on that this summer. And we've got, based on that portrait, we've now got a strategic plan that's several pages long. And it's got, I think there are five goals in there with very specific action plans. And I think it could guide us for the next at least three to five years. But it could easily be a 10-year map if we do it, if we do it right. And I think it's got a lot of exciting things in there. So Angie, thanks for doing that. Stay tuned. It'll be published soon. Because the first step is to get the SU board to support it. And then to, you know, then to start to get that plan out to the community, the staff. And some of them have seen it. Some of them worked on it. Don't forget, we had that 60-member design team that met all those crazy nights way back when that developed a lot of these ideas and thoughts. So that was good work.
Thank you, Angie and David. I will say that I, I've said this before, I'm super excited to where we've gotten with that document. I feel better having read it one time, and now we'll go over it again on Wednesday. But I feel better about that document than I ever have about any of our strategic plans, because I couldn't read the other ones. They didn't make any sense to me. The goals were all over the place and weren't in plain English. And this feels very good. So I'm excited to read it again and to improve on it if we can and move it forward and actually work from it. So then, does that, anybody else have any questions on Portrait? No? Okay. Moving forward to the Anti-Racism Task Force, we met last week. And I am now the chair of the Anti-Racism Task Force. Colleen's laughing.
Congratulations, Nikki.
I just found that out today.
Yeah, so it turns out that when there's radio silence, I can't keep my mouth shut. So, but I'm actually, it's such an important thing. I didn't feel like radio silence was appropriate, so I took over. And so we didn't, it was really an organizational meeting. We took an hour to decide who was chair. And we also kind of talked through, there were some questions as to whether or not a policy was the right way to start. And there was a lot of debate on that. That was probably 40 minutes of our discussion. And then there was also a question of whether or not we wanted to continue to call it Anti-Racism Task Force, if we wanted to pick a softer name that might ring better with the community. I don't feel like there was finalization on that, but it's still called the Anti-Racism Task Force. And I think my personal opinion is that it should remain that.
I think that's true of most of the group.
Yeah. Yeah. And so the next steps is I emailed Writing Wrong, Ariel and Jamison. And I'd like them to do, so the first step of the Anti-Racism Task Force was that we did a question and listening session where Jamison asked us some pretty tough questions, actually, very tough questions. And we responded. And so the next step is that we are going to direct Jamison to ask those tough questions of our administration and some staff members, because they're much more in touch with what's happening in the school. The board members kind of know what's happening in the broader community, but we're not drilled down. And thankfully, Brittany and Christine don't share every little detail of everything that happens in the school with us. So we're going to let them, hopefully, Jamison and Ariel- So we're going to let them, hopefully Jamison and Ariel will be willing to meet with them and do that question and answer session with them. Then the next step will be to probably bring it back to the board member task force to review a draft of a policy. It's just a very preliminary draft based on those two question and answer sessions. And from there, we'll have to figure out where to go next. I will say that Ariel and Jamison asked for a pause because they are graduate students and have exams that they need to take. So they, I emailed them today and said that if we get slowed down a little bit, I'm okay with that because I think that it's important to do this slowly and right. And so that is where we are with the Anti-Racism Task Force. Go ahead, Beth.
Yeah, I mean, I would also urge you guys to, you know, zoom, zoom out a little bit and look at board culture because, you know, there's a lot of white supremacy culture just based in our board system and how these things work. So yeah, I mean, I think it's worth looking at that and how to make our boards as inclusive as possible because it's, if we're making policy, it starts with us. And if we're not an inclusive system, then it's not going to trickle down anywhere.
And Nikki, the only question I had too was, I did get, I, I don't know whether it was requested or not, but I did get that list of people in Windsor who were interested on being on this task force. Did you ask all principals to submit a list of people who would be interested?
No. What I asked, so, so there's a lot, there's a lot to unpack here. There's, so Ariel and Jamison's, for the questioning session, 15 to 20 people is kind of the best. And so we did need to keep it small for that. I think for the initial policy discussion, we also need to keep it for the initial, just the board members. After that initial, then I think we can open it up. And so what I asked is for each community representative on the task force to pick three to four people, to find a way to pick three to four people from their community to join us for the next round of opening up. And I guess the way that I kind of envision it is that we'll have those 16 people review the policy and then allow the task force to listen in to those 16 people so that the task force can absorb how those 16 people react and what the conversation is so that we can build on that. That's kind of the vision of what I have. I haven't run that through Ariel and Jamison. And then I think from there, we still need to open it up broader because we can't just show up with this policy that hasn't been vetted well. So that's kind of what I see happening right now, but that's my brainstorm. And I'd like to talk to them to figure out what they think of that brainstorm and how they would manage it. As they've done this.
Yeah, that's right. And, and the other thing I was thinking about, I just want to make sure we're communicating to the, to the broader communities, both our parent communities and our staff community, because I think they all think that there's something starting like in the next couple of days where, you know, or next week or so where we're going to have a task force. I just want to be able to communicate that to them. But if those were the names that came based on that request, and I think there were only four, five of them, then that, then, then that's, that's great. The other thing I think we have to do, and maybe this is a conversation you could have with Jamison and Ariel, would be as we, as we embark on this work, because it's going to be very delicate work and it's not, by the way, it's not going to be very easy, easy work, I think. And especially when we get to the wider community. And, and, and that may be even some of that early debate about what we call the task force, buried in that conversation or that question or that debate, is a lot of underlying, you know, sort of baggage that could go along with the word racism or what, what is racism. But that's, that, that's, that's not the point I wanted to make though. What I do think at the onset, both in developing the policy and then coming up with a plan to implement that policy, I mean, I do think it would be good to talk about at some point with the, either with that smaller group, in terms of what are we, you know, kind of like what are we trying to accomplish if in fact our policy were effective and we were going to create safer spaces for minority communities, be they black, brown, or LGBTQ or whatever, what, what would that look like? What would need to, what, what, what would be different, you know, and kind of get some indicators there? Because what I'm worried about is that someplace down the line, we've got to figure out a way to measure our progress, right? And, and again, I don't think we have to decide this tonight, but I know I've been thinking a lot about this, especially through that Equity Fellowship that I'm in, and I just happen to be in the middle of it this, this week. And some, some of it is figuring out ways to measure, you know, what, what, what you are trying to accomplish. And some of it is pretty, it's pretty qualitative and it's not very quantitative, but I think if you can get the characteristics down or the attributes of an organization or a community that is welcoming and, and, and is a safe space for our minority communities, then I think then we can, you know, we, there might be a way to measure that.
Christine?
Yeah, David, did you get four community members or was it a mix of staff and community members on that list?
I think it was, I think it was, it looked to me like it was all staff. Do you have?
No, I just think there's a little bit of confusion on the because I think it was my understanding that Jamison and Ariel, we're going to do the listening interviews with the administrative team next. Is that accurate, Nikki? I mean, and then
So I have...
staff, and then it's the larger community? Is it, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so what, so the listening tour, I think they are only going to do with the task force, which has already been done. And then the administration team and the teachers that come back, back school.
So are the, so you, so the teachers are, are doing that with the administrators? And I'm only asking because I, I don't want there to be anything that gets in the way of honest answers. And I don't know if having administrators with the teachers, if that would happen or not. I mean, I'd like to think it wouldn't, but...
Yeah, it could.
Right. I, I definitely see where you're coming from there.
And by the way, just, go ahead, Nikki.
Well, I, so I think the way that we, I think the way that you communicate going forward is just like, let, let's just be honest and say that we're on pause for a second.
I think that's good. Everybody needs to know that. Yeah.
Yeah, let's just let people know that we're working with graduate students who are very bright and are doing the community a service that we're excited about, but they are graduate students and we need to let them do their job, their, their other job. And so that would be the first thing I communicate. Just so we're, pause and stay tuned. We'll let you know. You're not excluded and we'll let you know. And Christine, I think you bring up a really valid point there that I haven't figured out.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what to do.
That's a good point. And, and you know, who knows? Maybe Colleen, Colleen Deschamps emailed me that list today and I wasn't sure why, why, why she was. And maybe she was just randomly letting me know who's interested in the building in this topic. It might not have been any particular request. I can check in with her, you know, later on. But I think that's a, I think that's a good idea that we just let people know. Because I think even right up last summer, you know, there was this, you know, push, not push, but can, you know, a lot of interest in starting a task force like this. And then it just sort of, you know, it just leveled. Then we, then we were blessed to secure Ariel and, and Jamison to do this work, by the way, at an incredibly reasonable cost for two bright minds and two people of color to walk us through this. But then, you know, we, we, we still are on pause. So I think we just need to let people know that we're on pause. Because I know Christine, you have people in your building that are incredibly passionate about this. And I wouldn't want them to think that we just, hey, whatever happened to that Anti-Racism Task Force? Are they just kind of, you know, I think that would not be a good message to send to our folks. So maybe Angie and Katie and Christine, we can think about a way to get something out to the whole staff that just indicates we're on pause. It's still a major priority of our school boards and, 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 and stay tuned. I think that's all we need to say.
I, I think the pause, they, I think they said it was a couple of weeks. I don't think it's a, a long pause. It's just a short pause, so.
They got to get through exams.
Yeah, it's a short pause. I will admit that I've heard that they picked up more schools. And so yeah, and so I, I think that the service that they're providing is so needed and by everybody that I think everybody's realizing it now. And so I just, I guess my personal opinion is that I think I, I very much feel like I need help. I, as a person of white privilege, I am not the one to be writing an anti-racism policy. And so I, it is my outlook that I will continue to be in touch with them, but I'm also not going to pressure them to produce something. And I, if they finish some other schools first, I'm totally okay with that as long as, you know, we could try and get the attention that I feel like we need. So that's kind of the tack that I want to take because I feel like it's so important. I don't want to rush it. So I will keep in touch. I emailed this morning. I haven't heard anything yet. And...
You know, we'll get something out to the staff just so they know.
Yep.
It's a work in progress.
Yeah. And I feel like using them is so critical. They really like, they, they could run away right now and do this for the next year. And I feel like we're lucky to have found them. I also feel like that their demand is going to be so high. I don't know how to manage that. And I don't know that they know how to manage that. So I'm trying to be sensitive to that. Yeah. So we'll see, hopefully. Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, thanks. I think you, you hit on a bunch of things that were, were questions in my mind since the last supervisory union meeting. But first of all, Beth was talking about our board. Evidence of, not our board, I'm sorry, but just evidence of white supremacy on, in public, public board, let's say. And I wouldn't deny that. I just thought that it's, it was encouraging to me, even though none of us would have wished to be in in the midst of a coronavirus pandemic. But this, this format that we're using now is we've had more folks at school board meetings in the past few months than I can remember ever. I've been doing this with you guys eight and a half years and it's been a lot of quiet nights. And so that, that is good. I mean, it's, it's a form of equity. I don't know how it addresses the white supremacy part, but I was curious about the Writing Wrong. Am I correct that it was Nikki Writing Wrong LLC?
Yes, I think it is.
Right?
Correct.
Like, do they have a web presence that, that anybody can check out or, you know?
They have a national, they have a national, they have a national web presence.
National?
Yeah. So I think if you, if you were to Google them, you'd see something about their, you'll, you'd see something about them at, at the national level.
So Jamison and Ariel are part of a, a much larger organization?
Correct.
Okay. I did not understand that. So, and then that brings us to, brings me to the part about, I was curious whether they were, the breadth of the work and whether, you know, they were both at law school in South Royalton, like what part of the state would they do this work in, just on a practical matter? So I don't know how it's blossoming. I hope, I wish them all the luck. So most of the policies that we, that we have approved easily have been looked at by the VSBAs team, their internal legal eyes, and then they have external or contract legal help too. So is that something that we should be? I wonder, it's like, as soon as this starts to get, get pretty big, our friends work, are they working with the School Boards Association or the Superintendent's Association? Or is everybody aware of what's, what's going on?
I think those are really valid questions. And those are thoughts that flew through my head as well. I, I think part of the work is that the policy, I mean, yes, we're a small state and, and we could probably draft a policy for the state, but it really, the work needs to happen in the communities, I think. And so while, and this is just where I came to in my own head, being part of this process, is that yes, I do think that the state could approach this. I do think that the VSDA could provide guidance on this. But I think that from a community level, we'll get something of more value by doing it at the community level. And I think that that's where Jamison and Ariel are just so uniquely positioned as two outspoken students of color who are capable of speaking to their experience and help those of us who haven't experienced that guide us through developing an anti-racism packet, but then also the fact that they can develop a policy because they've got legal background as well. And I think that's just an amazing combination. I think no worry that they're over tasked and that maybe they need to be at a state level. But that's, I think, more their decision than ours. And I'm just going to keep trying to hope that we can keep going on our process.
And it is difficult. I, I just tried Googling them again. It's not, there's a trick to how to do this. Elizabeth showed me before to get to the, but, but, but I think those, those are good questions, Scott.
I did Writing Wrong's Anti-Racism, and I got it.
Okay. Yeah. It's time.
The other way, I think Seek Truth Report, Writing Wrong's programs.
Yeah, I know they're, they're all over the place. They're not just here. But Scott, to your point, I think that, I know the Southeast Superintendents, and that would be everybody south of basically Hartford, you know, they're, they're working together, you know, those superintendents to make sure that regionally, we have a presence this way too. And I, I've certainly mentioned that resource to them, whether they'll use them or not, they're all in different places, but, but it's, but it's, it is a good point.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking it on, Nikki.
Yeah, I, I think it's important. And like I told, the task force is, I'm going to delegate. So I'm going to organize these meetings, but I'm not doing all the work. I, as you guys know, I'm a little overwhelmed. Okay, so that brings us, unless anybody has any new business, that brings us to setting the agenda and then we will do a short executive session, but that is not on this agenda, David.
Yeah, I have some new...
Yeah, you could, you could still move to go in even though it's not on the agenda.
Scott, what did you say?
New business.
Yes.
It's totally off the subject that we're on. It's totally off of every other subject that we've been on.
That's, we're on a new business subject.
So I think this is pointed right at the superintendent and Larry's not here. I wish he was here doing a report, but it kind of ruffles my feathers that you get on the website and then it lists schools of WSESU. And we're this, we're the Heartland School District Board. And I can recall, you know, getting letters, letters arriving at the board desk during a meeting that were addressed to the HES Board, you know, that's, it's similar, you know, we're, there are, for one thing, there are students who aren't in the district every day. But we're definitely not just a school of WSESU. You know, our governance is, is, is complete right here. And so... And so it's, I just wish, I guess I'm being a stinker, but getting some of the basic stuff, the communication and the upkeep of the website, you know, having somebody, having that be a priority over, not over, but as well as coronavirus pandemic response. Please.
Yeah, I know we, you know, we have, and Larry would be probably the better person to address this. And we, we do have a webmaster. It happens to be Larry's brother, Ryan. And, and, and the way that website gets updated is with the information that's sent to Ryan. Now the apps, the actual organization of the website, I think that would be a bigger conversation that we'd have with Larry, whether or not it should be schools or school districts, you know. I mean, I'm not saying that's what you're proposing, but I mean, I think that would be a, a bigger question. But I think it's a valid question and we could, I know Larry's going to be giving a report at the November meeting to the entire ESU board, first of all, about his budget. But just like, you know, how he does that little annual update. So that might be a time too. I'm not trying to slough it off tonight, but to bring that up again, Scott, and we can, you know, we can talk more clearly about what that looks like.
I mean, just to be clear, we're not, we're not a unified district. As much as I've spoken about that and how in some ways the governance structure of a unified district would.
Be different.
Has, is different and would have a lot of pluses in my mind, but we're just not there. So it makes it look like that.
And part of that, quite frankly, is a little bit intentional, but, but I know what you mean. I, I get it.
I guess I have a little thing on that too, is the lunch menus are not updated very quickly.
What do they, do they come out by the month?
Yeah, they come out by the month, but I remember like, I don't know, it was like the seventh or eighth and I went to the website and it was still September. So.
That's an easy one to fix. Well.
Yeah.
An easy one to fix, but.
And I don't know, just an oversight, I mean, like, I, I don't know what the structure of the website, if it has to be updated and forwarded from location.
No, no.
And I'm not really complaining about it, but while we're on the subject.
No, that's right. And there's an example where that would be, you know, that's not a, a Ryan Dower problem. That, that's probably a Craig Locarno problem. He's got to get that to Ryan in a timely fashion so that it can get posted to the website. So, but that, I'll, I'll, I'll certainly, I mean, I can, I can, that one might be easy to fix. We had a problem two weeks ago where we weren't getting the board minutes and the board agendas. You know, because as soon as it goes out to all of you, and it sounds like it might not have even gone out to all of us this time. I don't know. I mean, Lori's really, it's a work in progress. She's getting there, I think. And she's incredibly efficient, Lori Brown. She'll get this down pat. But she admittedly, she said, I made a mistake. I didn't, this was on a Weathersfield meeting. It's that, you know, that was probably the worst board to, you know, to make that mistake. But we didn't get it to the website in time, but Lori apologized, you know, she apologized. And she said, I'll make sure that happens. And I went to the website tonight and all of our stuff, you know, the, the minutes were there, the agenda was there. I mean, I don't know how many people go to the website, but I know Lori's trying to keep that up to, up to date. But the website's always an ongoing kind of issue, but it's, you know, and we, yeah. But point well taken. We'll stay on it.
Where did you go Nikki? Did you go to the WSCSU or the Heartland?
Um, for the lunch menu?
Yeah.
I was going to the Heartland. Sorry, somebody needed a hug. I was going to the Heartland. It's, I think it's there this week because I did print it, I think.
I bet it's there now, but, but it should be by the first of the month.
It should be, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll follow.
It was late.
Food service is, that's what it's under.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's there now. It should be.
Yeah, yeah. No, but I'm not like, I don't want to be whiny or anything.
No. You know, yeah.
I mainly think there's a, there have been parents that.
Well, people check it.
Yeah, people check it and especially kids with food allergies. And that's the one that I worry about most is that some parents would choose to pack lunch based on what's. Okay. So any other new business or are we doing okay? Okay. So for setting the next agenda, I think we'll stick, I think this agenda is pretty spot on. Is there anything that people want to add to this agenda that? I would keep everything and I do principals reports, superintendents report COVID.
Budget. I think she broke. Portrait.
And then he.
Yeah.
Oh, I froze.
Just say yes.
I froze. Okay. Maybe you can hear me now that I turned my video off.
Now we can.
Okay. So I would stick with the exact same items for discussion, the exact same agenda. Is there anything? Did I miss anything that people feel like we need to discuss?
Those are our priorities, I think.
Okay. David, these are minor things, but I did want to keep the radar list on the agendas. It got dropped off this one. Again, no fault. I just, we went through all the work to get it put together. I want to keep it on there because I, it actually is something that I review before every meeting and I. Today. And then we should also keep the tentative executive session on there. I think that also dropped off. But the good news is, is that we got the principal's report and the superintendent's report back. I'm happy. Okay. I think we need a short executive session. I'm going to give some hugs to my family.
This will be quick.
One to two minute break or are we ready to dive through and power through?
I think. What'd you say Christine?
I, I didn't say anything.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think.
Just give me a thumbs up if you want to power through or a thumbs down if you need a break.
I think we can power through and be done in 10 minutes.
Okay, awesome. Let's power through. Okay, I'm going to give a quick hug though. Okay, I think we can stop. I would, no, we need a, I need a motion to move into executive session.
A motion to go on executive session.
Beth Roy, yep.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
It's 8:43.
Say all those in favor of moving to executive session. Say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Okay.